I'd like to be
To be the flag behind the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving to I'm free, I need some nominations for the position of Vice President.
I nominate Gary Estes for Vice President.
A second? Okay. All right, then, do you accept?
I accept.
All in favor?
I am.
And your fellow's question? Okay, looking forward to that. I see. Welcome and Godspeed.
Yes. Good luck with that.
Here's your oath, Gary.
Oh, do I have to say it or can we just sign it?
You can just say it. It's not one sentence.
Okay. I, Gary Estes, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education for the Truantsburg Central School District, according to the best of my abilities.
Sign first, sign.
Hey, Gary.
And now we start paying them, working.
Okay, good.
You're welcome. We're back in business again, okay? Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented in the packet? If none, then they will stand as would. Okay. Moving on to open forum. And at this time, we would like to give district residents an opportunity to ask any questions about this agenda or about operations within this school. Personnel matters cannot be addressed in public session, then comments may be recorded and responded to by the Board of Education or Superintendent Edelman at the date. So, we ask you to keep your comments or remarks to five minutes or less. So, if anybody here that they would like to say something, have a question, make a comment, it takes me longer to read that than it does for anybody to read the rest of the questions. Okay. None, then we will move on. Okay. Agenda changes, and we have two walk-ons.
Yep.
Okay.
New business, twelve B, twelve E.
Okay, anybody want copies? I don't know. Please tell. Okay, then, with your bunch of presentations. And Mr. Blythe, where did you go?
Right there.
Presentations. Okay. Okay, so here I go.
Yes.
So, public speaking is not my strong suit, so I'm a little nervous. Thank you for being gentle. Um, Mr. Blythe came by and said, "Can you just talk about all the things that are going on with you so you have an idea?" I said, "Certainly." So, I told him, "Global goodness and local law."
Ideas are your strengths, right?
Right. Thank you.
So, many strengths.
So, Mr. Huntley always tells us teachers, "I want you to take risks." So...
Look at that. That's a badge picture.
Oh, my!
This is a badge picture.
Walked a cheetah, pet a lion, which I realized later was not smart, and I ziplined over Victoria Falls. I can show that to you, but I was told to keep this at five minutes, so...
Hi.
This is me screaming across. Josh also encourages us to be creative with the curriculum. As a school district, we have taken the Universal Declaration of Human Rights to an entire new level. We have a sister school in rural Zambia. This means acting in the spirit of brotherhood, so everyone has the right to life, liberty, and security of person. We teach the UDHR in fifth grade, and I believe they also do it in tenth grade in high school. Okay, so, um, what we have done so far, all three buildings, we've done a supply drive and we sent books, papers, pencils, sports equipment to Chisikesi Zambia schools. I should mention that this is done through, there's Professor Bla, Dr. Munna Ndula at Cornell, and I'm collaborating with him and his team on this. We have raised over a thousand dollars to ship the supplies, and Dr. Munna Ndula has matched each dollar we have raised. The middle school students and staff made a wall built up as a symbol of our partnership, which you'll see from the next slide. And there are approximately twenty Truantsburg students writing pen pals to students at our sister school in Zambia. So, this is, the one on the left is me meeting the headmistress, I was writing her all year about setting up the pen pal. We owe, we had shipped the supplies out in, I think it was Easter morning from Dr. Ndula's house. It took months to get there. I got there in August, and the supplies had just arrived. They have nothing, so they did an entire ceremony where they opened everything up and they took the supplies and they were dancing around with science books and pencils. Until, on the far right is the quilt that we made. In the center, a student, Dante Munio, who designed our, he designed a picture of Tegana Falls with books and sort of water mist in his books, because we bring books to vets. And the students on fabric quilt drew like global citizen pictures, and Dorothy Sheldon put it all together. Okay. So, we are helping build into a high school. I have this on site. So, the center picture, women crush the stones to make blocks. They do that by hand, and then they turn them into the cinder blocks. There are no machines, so it was slow going. There was pickaxes and shovels, and that's it. On the far right is the future library. That's me standing there. And, so this is like the first area of high school, how the education system works are still, even though they're an independent country now, they still have the old British system that if you don't pass your ninth grade exams, you do not continue. So, right now, we're supplying the area middle schools to deep up their skills, so there'll be bodies to put in this new school. Trying to do it fast. Okay, so, what's next? Water, from the UN Millennium Goals to T-Berg curriculum. So, that day when I was helping with the, building the school of the site, I was at that well, as you see on the left. Dr. Ndula put that in primary, at this point, to mix the cement. And I had noticed that all day, there was one, at one point, there was a little boy, he had his laundry and detergent, and he spoke clear, fluent English, and he had a rock, and he said, "Oh, sorry, I'm just using the water to do laundry." He was hanging it up on his shrub, and I, "Okay, fine as me." And then, I noticed that there was a lot of activity around the well. So, one point, I went back to the borehole, because there was pumping water to put in a barrel, to reel it down, to mix the cement. There was a little girl in the middle picture, she's next to me, hope I don't cry. She's about my five-year-old height. Sorry.
You're gonna get me, Melissa.
And she put it on her head. Sorry. Um, so, that's my friend, we're gonna just ignore that, sorry about that. So, it got me back on task, so she put it on her head.
It's your daughter.
And I went to take it off on her head, and she looked at me like, "What are you doing? That's my water." And I said, "No, I'm gonna walk back with you to your village," and she was scared, because she's thinking, "What is this crazy woman doing with my water?" So, she kept trying to take it back from me. So, and then, it was, it was, I was sore for days. I would have to put it down, and she had a slip on her face, like, "If you'd just let me walk with my water, we'd be back by now." But anyway, this is the road. It was a very long road, and she did not have shoes. Um, so we get back to, oh, I don't have pictures of the village. Anyway, so, what we're gonna do is, so last year's focus on fundraising was getting them supplies and shipping them out. This year's focus is going to be about water. In our curriculum, in the seventh grade curriculum, we, there's, they read long-winded water. It's also in a module to read about the global water crisis. So, there's gonna be a bake sale in the library, haven't asked yet, I hope you're okay.
Nice move.
Because that, I, it's internat, since I think nineteen forty-six, it's the International Human Rights Day, promoted by Eleanor Roosevelt. And then, since nineteen ninety-three, the UN started the World Water Day. So, we're going to, we did a Barnes &amp; Noble fundraiser around Christmas time last year, all the dates were taken up, so I thought, I've gotta get creative. We'll have it around World Water Day, and we're gonna promote like UN Millennium Goals and the purpose of the global water crisis. Okay, there's that. Then, okay, so now to the hoop house. So, Mr. McGuire said, "Do all the things, all the things you're doing in one incantation."
This is good.
So, um, this, the source from this is NPR, The Salt, Healthy Eaters, What School Gardens Do. And I learned a few things. So, studies show that schools that with learning gardens have an increased percent of students passing standardized tests, I'm not sure of the correlations, and increased engagement and student participation, which I am witnessing firsthand. Sue Stein is in my classroom every other day, and it, what we're learning from her is just phenomenal. Less teacher turnover, which I didn't know. So, and I think that has, what they're describing in the article is that when there's something like this, people just feel invigorated, something big is going on. An increase of fresh food consumption by both students and adults, and students gain greater understanding of entrepreneurship. So, I'm gonna hit on all those things. Um, so, some of the things that we're doing in our school, I just said about Ms. Stein, brings her class to analyze the health of the plants and examine spores and rhamnoscops and way beyond that. Mr. Maloffi is gonna work with me on, we're going to create a ser, he and the students are gonna create a survey, we're gonna ask people what vegetables they've tried, what they haven't tried, what they like, what they don't like, and see if having a hoop house increases their exposure to eating vegetables, and we'll study that by the end of the year. Liz Rattenbord, who's a new phenomenal TA, we're gonna work with her, Mrs. Morris's Labs, the art teacher, and we hope to make the hoop house like a walking gallery, bring art into it and research and plaques, and just, so it's not only a hoop house, but it's also like a museum gallery type thing. Social studies, we will examine what food justice is, it is and isn't an issue in our community at some point. We like to take a look at what's been, what goes on in our local food pantry. Is it mostly canned goods and boxed goods? And are they getting enough fresh foods? And if not, how can we solve that? What else? Okay. Um, oh, so, this is what I'd really like to have happen. I would love Truantsburg...
Next year, at least, probably next week, right? Like, this is up here.
To make an ag school. There are, so, ag schools used to be, oh, you said your dad was a part of like a farmer's...
My father-in-law.
Your father-in-law. Did something with farming in the schools, so that used to be in the schools. And you, Ms. Doctor Rossi, it's, agriculture is different than it ever has been before with the changing world, climate change and everything, so...
Well, we have a big glut of teachers coming back interested in ag teaching again in a way that is, we're starting to burgeon now.
Yes.
They're coming back like crazy to get their masters in some, the thing you just showed, that slide, that sort of listed out the various aspects from the science of it to the social justice of it, is the continuum that we see teachers interested in focusing on. And, yeah, I mean, the thing about having ag around, like Moravia has a beautiful border, but you have to have facilities. And so, it's a good discussion to have when we're talking about it, but, you know, it would have to be more than a hoop house.
Right.
We really wanna do it in a nice way.
I like your attitude.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I can't tell you how the community is just so hungry for this. I almost, I could keep up with everything, but people are calling me, "I wanna donate, I wanna help." Somebody wrote me, "Write me what your vision is, and I'll fund it." I didn't even write him back yet, because I have to get a vision. But here's the vision, bees on the roof. This is thanks to Dr. Marvin Prince. He kept saying, "Have you thought about bees?" And I said, "Yes, I have a hive, I just got one." But he said, "At Lansing, the students figured out, they cleared it with the town, you have them on the roof, and you're out of the line of flight of them." And he said, he set it up in, it's a garden, children's garden. So, there's a way to do it in the midst of students where it's safe and et cetera.
Well, there's also ways of just taking some landscape and making it pollinator-friendly, putting some milkweed, some native plants out there. I think bees are sort of like the Kim Kardashian of the pollinator world. They're famous because they're famous. So, I think there's a lot of ways to pollinate. I think there's a lot of ways to pollinate.
I disagree, but we won't get into this now.
Okay.
I'll bring Dr. Prince on my side, and we'll go at it.
Yeah, for sure. Because I see him every day.
Good. Tell them that you're making this idea, you're protecting for e-nutrients. Just for delivery. Chickens near the hoop house. It's been done in Philadelphia. Did I hear, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Get the language manager.
It's been done in Portland. And eighteen space for cheese. We made brie and cheddar last year in the library. And what I'd also like to have happen...
We should have that in our tree, maybe.
By accident.
A middle, we're gonna start with a middle school farmer's market, and I'd love to see it branch out to a district-wide farmer's market, maybe in the spring and in the fall, like the first Friday of every month, the last hour, so kids can bring their, kids who have hives, they can bring their honey, kids who have chickens, they can bring their eggs, and we can sell right on the second. Okay, just wait. Okay, the last thing I have to tell you about, and I need your help with this, actually. So, on October seventh, we're having class routes. This was generously, generously funded by TCSD Foundation. And what we're gonna have is, so we have our, it's, we have grassroots, so we're gonna do class routes, which is a celebration of everything we have in this community, and also to highlight that this is our industry. So, agriculture is our industry. The arts, music, that's part of our industry. We have the coolest, so one of the gals that I met today, she lives on Congress Street, and she grows flowers, and she's gonna come in and she's gonna teach us how to, can you help me? And, oh, sorry, she's gonna teach us how to do Japanese tie dye, and she's gonna teach us how to dye yarn, even spin yarn, and if you could just pass these down. That's one of them. Let's see. Oh, and she also is gonna talk about how the fashion industry has one of the biggest impacts of carbon footprint on the planet, and so how we have to start shifting our thinking for sustainability, even in the fiber arts. So, that's one idea. We're also going to have tents set up, so bands are gonna play, our middle school, high school, and elementary school music will be performing, and we're also gonna have outside bands come in. We are working on bringing chefs in to cook with students, and we're also working on getting a cider press to make cider. There'll be a culminating activity where we'll have music and food at the end of the day. It was specifically to you, because we also have a, do you know him?
Yes, he's one of my students.
So, he is, I'm hoping he's gonna come in and do this lesson.
I saw those works.
Isn't that great?
Yeah. I hope I told him well.
He doesn't think he can do it on October seventh, but I said, "Oh, I think I convinced some people to let you go." I'll let see, maybe we can, like, share.
We can share, sweetie.
We can share, so, pass those down. So, I'm working on, I have a few chefs, I have a few farmers, I have a few artists. I'd love for this to be a big thing, so if you can get the word out, October seventh, if people can give an hour or a morning, we'll get them the supplies that they need, and it'll just be a rotating thing. They'll go from like cooking with chefs outside under a tent, then they'll go into the middle school art room, do some of these activities, go out to the outdoor classroom, listen to some music, and we're opening it up to the entire district. We're gonna send a list out of presenters and activities, and people can just sign up, or they can ignore it. That's it.
Go, Melissa, we're behind you.
Thank you. You've always been, when I call you, "Can you help me?" What's about this weed now? And you're like, "Oh, it's fine."
Good stuff.
So, I spoke as fast as I could.
You didn't break it.
And so, can I, does anybody have questions, or did I cover it all?
That's great.
Whoa. That's a whole lot.
Yeah, and I left out a lot.
That's what I asked you back.
Yeah, okay. We actually raised eighteen hundred dollars last year just for Zambia, and we raised a thousand for the hoop house in like two weeks for supplies and et cetera. So, all right, that's it. Control. Okay. Are you continuing to raise money for Zambia?
We have a question in the audience.
Yes.
I was just gonna say, Jess, Michael and I are in a rotary. If you came to the rotary...
December first, I'm there.
All right.
All, you're gonna see so much more.
I just decided to be supportive, things.
Thank you. I'm gonna be dressing native. We're gonna walk, we're gonna walk with water on our heads now, or not.
No. Good to, maybe you're gonna have to stop.
December first, and maybe I'll even bring a Zambia dish.
If you need some help on that, I would love to answer.
Oh, that would be wonderful. That would be wonderful. Thank you. Oh, and here's our logo. Orion Vogue More Made Bees Last Year. So, this is our, do you have any?
I don't.
You've got, you've got...
No.
No? You don't? You didn't come to the lunch last year?
No.
There's a sticker, it's, we have t-shirts. It's, yeah.
Oh, this is cool.
Okay, I'll just let you guys, okay. Shall I let you go do the rest of your stuff?
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Wow. I can sound that.
I will be having to ignore. Thank you. Okay, moving on, by the way, we don't have any further items we need to address at this point. And moving on to committee decisions. The Policy Committee did meet, and you have some important issues regarding quality. Nothing right now necessarily to look at, it's just a review. We're waiting on a number of, some research. For instance, we are also looking at the policy for the rights of nonconsular parents, and we wanna make sure, we're seeing that this is not, we don't adopt the policy if it's in the way of what you're already doing, that you think already works.
Great.
So, when you have a chance to be able to review that, let us know, you know, where it needs to be tweaked, and not tweak the school's regulations. So, and Michael, you said you had a, when we were presented with the building plans, and first there was a change, and then there wasn't a change?
Well, the, yeah, the, there wasn't a change, was, we were, there was some conversation about evacuation of the whole campus, and then one part of the policy talked about the principals helping load the school buses, and, and that doesn't pertain to that, that pertains to an early dismissal. When we know we're going to leave, the buses are here, the principals do need to unload. So, after just reading what's ahead of it, what's after it, just to make sure...
So, it was correct the way it was written?
It was correct the way it's been.
Okay. All right. So, do you have any questions or comments regarding the food?
I wish you would have any.
Well, we have a food service as well, that was most helpful, as was Angie. And we're, we're doing well. Um, let's see, oh, you did include the counts, okay, I have them somewhere, but they're buried. High school average for lunches is ninety, middle school, a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty, and elementary school, two hundred to two fifty. We're serving about four fifty lunch, two hundred breakfasts, and we're coming much closer to our goal than we have in previous years. Fewer personnel, doing more with less. That's great.
Yeah, one of the things we had mentioned for food services, perhaps we could up the marketing a little bit, and let students know, make your announcement ahead of time, you know, this is what's currently for lunch, and so at least they know because you put, paninis are available in high school. So, there's the ingredients to be able to make it, so we thought that might carry some...
I don't make food comments anymore.
I think you may know, like...
I don't make food comments anymore.
Yeah. It would be nice if we could do a farmer's school program. Currently, we don't have a vendor, but having enough there, enough in the area, so I think that's something we need to work on.
Well, Beth said that she's working with locals, because there's some hoops that they have to jump through.
Yeah, actually, there's been...
I'll pop my words, you caught it.
Yeah, they probably have to follow good agricultural practices, gap standards, just like if they were selling in a grocery store or something. And so, you know, you know people that have sort of little operations, unless they're serious about it, the money that you have to put in sometimes to get the good agricultural standards met, you have to scale up to the size. So, you didn't, like, remember Swan would be somebody that I would imagine, if we, you know, they need a lot of the standards, they sell in all a lot of the grocery stores, those, High Point, the people that, the Piggery, those sorts of larger local places, it would probably be a little bit of a shift in their business to service us, they certainly wouldn't make as much money. That's the biggest thing. They're not gonna have people, the state's not paying fourteen dollars a pound for pork. So, so that's the reality of really good local food, is you actually pay what it costs. It's not subsidized by the corn prices that, you know, are in the Midwest, so. So, so I love what Melissa said and what we're talking about, this is the part of STEM curriculum that would be focused on plants and food systems. I mean, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't have a STEM program that had energy issues associated with it, why we wouldn't have a, doesn't have to just be about robots walking around doing stuff, it can be plant science, engineering and that. So, hopefully, it's a broad discussion about these things, and food service is a big part, because the kids are consuming the end product. They're connected to it in some way.
Yeah, well, that's what Beth had pointed out, that in other words, the engagement of the kids of being able to sort of pick and choose what they, what they want to eat and be able to relate to a little bit better. There was also a question regarding fact that we are, what was it, we have only one cook at this point, rather than three cooks? And right now, there was retirement on one of the food service workers that was, was not replaced, and neither was the cook. So, the question came up is, well, what are we going to do with that kind of money that we're not paying out to? And actually, that kind of money that we're not paying out is just not necessarily there to begin with, because we subsidize the food program, what was that last year, it was eighty thousand?
No, by a hundred and seventy thousand. We have an interfund transfer of eighty-four thousand, and additionally, the general fund picked up another eighty-nine thousand in benefits for the school lunch program. So, yes, those positions were not replaced, which gets us closer to the industry standard of meals per labor hour. So, by not having those salaries to pay out, it will lessen our expenses, but obviously will not make up for the deficit that we...
But it's not a savings.
Correct.
So, okay. Any other questions? And moving on to Douglas, do you have...
Boy, you like.
Oh, well, let's move on.
I think they're at your place. You should each have a TST, Bosse's, handout, which has to do with the fact that at this point in time, Bosse's does not, is not exempt from current tax cap in building expenses, capital expenses, and if any of you happen to be, yeah, you may not have one, Kimberly, I may have a limited number, I'm sorry. I think that's the next question. Uh, you did have, where was I? Um, anyway, that, that's, if any of you are gonna be talking with your legislators, if you would please bring this up as an issue, because regular schools are exempt, Bosse's is not, and as you know, we are trying to look at a building project at this point in time, and every little penny makes a difference.
So, the capital expenses are not exempt in the tax cap formula?
That's correct.
It's not that, it's, well, they, I mean, Bosse's has a capital, capital issue, right? They have no way to fund their capital projects, right?
That's us.
Is that what this is about? Is that what this is about?
So, it comes right back to us immediately. It would be a savings to us if we were allowed that.
So, this has gotta be a Lisbon sort of thing, right? Lisbon, Elizabeth?
No.
No?
No. Not to my knowledge.
Oh, Beth, you're saying Beth's having a misfortune? I'm not. She's grinning, cut the wrong side of her face.
There's, 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 there's more than one issue with Bosse's needing funding and things that interact with Bosse's that really end up not being fair, that limit us.
A number of...
So, if we could get this fixed somehow, the, when the Bosse's goes out for a capital cap, and we have a share of that, it doesn't get added to our expenses for our tax cap calculation.
That's the issue.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to have happen.
Okay, then you also have a little handout on leadership from central New York, which was absolutely amazing. So, I copied it for all of you. It's one of the best presentations I've ever heard. Short, sweet, to the point, and this was at a president's roundtable. And this was at a president's roundtable. So presidents and new vice presidents, if they're interested, are more than welcome. October 1st, I think I... It's written down there somewhere. We are having a workshop from nine to noon at... Well, actually, Charlotte hasn't decided where it's going to be yet. But that's October 1st. And if anyone else is interested in seeing one of these, just on leadership. And it's very concise, very... It's really great. And then finally, what do we need to do? Bosie's. Oh, Bosie's, yes. Well, Bosie's is rather excited. We just approved our first college textbook in biology. So we are going to be offering college-level courses to kids. It's the biggest textbook I've ever seen. We had great difficulty getting it around the table. But it's really exciting that they're moving so quickly in that direction. I'm sure there's...
Does this is that linked to a particular CTE class?
Well, it's linked to...
New Visions.
Oh, the New Visions.
Oh, it's in the New Visions program.
Yeah, New Visions. And...
So that's a new thing? We teach college biology in New Visions. That's a new thing?
So they'll probably get dual credit?
They will get dual credit. And it's the first time we... Bosie's.
Nice. And is that for both programs?
Pardon me?
Is that for both programs? The medical and the environmental?
Yeah, it could be used as both if... I mean, obviously, the credit works both ways, so, yeah.
So the students go to their campus to take that class, or they do it online?
The kids are taking it through New Visions. They're doing it. It's integrated in the curriculum.
Which happens at...
Which happens either at KU Medical Center or at Cornell.
At Cornell.
With this class as well?
Generally, Cornell, yeah.
It's like taking college chemistry here.
So there's a class offered that they sit in?
Yes. And they take the bus to Cornell and get all sorts of wonderful experiences.
It's not a separate college course at Cornell that they're taking. It's part of the New Visions course that they're taking.
That's offered there?
Yes.
By the faculty who work for Bosie's?
Yes.
Yes.
Similarly, did you have anything about the engineering? The New Visions engineering program?
Yeah. No, I haven't had anything specific about it because, of course, it's brand new, so... But it's exciting. Do you have anyone in?
It's launching next year.
It's next year, I know.
So this year will... Like, is the... They're hoping to hire the teacher, my understanding is, as of mid-year.
They're having a little... It's a little...
Yeah, there's two... Well, there's the Machinist program that they're having a great deal of difficulty finding someone to fill that position. But they're also creating the New Visions engineering program that will have a physics calculus teacher that will facilitate it. So the kids will be getting physics and calculus credit through that. But that program will start next September.
Student performance over the summer was pretty darn good. They had thirty classrooms full in the Smith School. And many high school students were able to earn extra credit for academic classes. We had a hundred and seventy students in Regents classes as opposed to three hundred and ninety last year. But last year was the first time we ever offered them, so many had taken them. And the students were definitely successful in passing the Regents. We got them with one failure, which is pretty amazing. And overall courses, seventy-nine point four-one was the overall final on Regents. So it was... Global Regents had a course on average showed a ten point five percent increase in scores. So they were able to really bring their scores up to make them more college-ready. And the Smith School, the first time offered practice, which is fine. Yeah. By and large, summer program was very successful. Melissa?
Any questions, any comments? And we're moving on to the administrative report.
I'll go first.
Yes. What time's the soccer game start?
I need... Well, I need to be up to the field at about ten o'clock.
Okay.
Talk back.
So...
Did you hear?
Someone singing. Yes. It's the Harpsmith Boys soccer team is taking on Lansing tonight. And there are some special things also to honor Adam Hack, the athletic director from Lansing, who passed away.
Oh, yeah.
So... And there's a kid whom I'm really close to who's singing the National Anthem, not wanting to hear it. So administrative report from the high school. We've made it through our first week very successfully. We are now at three hundred and six students enrolled in the high school. Biggest class is the eleventh grade with eighty-two. Smallest is the senior class with seventy-two. We have a couple of new folks on the staff. We have our new chemistry teacher, Amanda Armitage. She replaces Marge Murphy, who moved to Dryden. Renee Ellsworth is our new career counselor, who is a rock star and is really doing a great job and putting some great things together for our kids. We also have one new teaching assistant, Nikki Feierstein, who's actually an alumni of Charles Dickerson, so it's great to have her back. And then, of course, April Leiter is back officially now, full-time as the new secretary in the office. This year, staff development focuses... We are doing two sort of focuses. One is a theme. The staff, and I'm working with the leadership team at the high school to develop a set of series of themes. We went through and reviewed all of some of the different things that we've done over the last five, six years. And what we're really doing is targeting specific areas from within that and select groups of staff are going to dig deeper into some of those areas to sort of enhance and keep us going, and then share out with staff. So we're trying to use the expertise within our buildings to expand everyone's knowledge. We are going to do some specifically targeted things around career orientation to help staff sort of facilitate conversations with students around careers, since that is one of our primary goals as a district. So within that context, the challenge is that... I'm going to talk... That Michael has asked us to talk about challenges as well as some celebrations, and I'm going to talk about that as a strength/weakness. One of the great things about our program is that we do provide a very diverse program, given the size of our school. And I would challenge anyone to find a school that has three hundred and six students that offers as much as we do in terms of challenging rigorous coursework, college courses, AP courses, and then support systems that will support all of our students through graduation. So that's something that I think is a celebration. But of course, doing that with the small staff that we have is always a challenge because our staff is stretched very thin. Everybody's trying to do a little bit extra. And the point that I want to celebrate, and again, I know you guys already recognize this, but again, just whenever you have the opportunity to thank a staff member and thank a teacher, it really goes a long way because the number of staff that I have there doing independent studies with kids, staff that are offering electives this year and trying to squeeze something else in when they're already teaching for different preps during the day. And then I have a number of teachers who have volunteered this year to provide additional interventions in lieu of an administrative assignment. So instead of doing a study hall where they just sit and supervise kids, they're doing writing labs, math labs, learning center periods. So people are volunteering and stepping up to the plate to really help make sure kids are getting all the help they need. So again, and that stuff that people are all doing because they're great teachers and great people, not because I had to twist their arm and beg them to do it. They came to me and said, hey, we want to do this. We have an idea that'll help kids. So a huge thanks to a tremendous staff, so that's my celebration.
Nice.
Next? You go next. We can jump around. We have to do things in order.
So we had a wonderful opening at elementary school, very successful. And I always say, once we've lived through each day of the week, we know we're good. Because each day is different, especially with pickups and drop-offs and... So we are at four hundred and twenty-five students at the elementary school. Our pre-K is very strong at forty-six. Our largest class is kindergarten with eighty-four. So very pleased with enrollment, still having kids. We have two more to start today, so they're still coming. So I'll give you updates as they keep coming. We have four new teachers at the elementary school. In kindergarten, we have Kelly Stillwell, who subbed for us. She was... She's also a T-Bird person, Kelly Minor, maybe for some of you. She taught at Newfield and has come to T-Bird this year. Kim Knight, who has been a long-term sub for us and has done a wonderful job. She's in first grade this year. And Chrissy Suter is in third grade. She had been teaching in Syracuse. And when she started, you know, we talked at opening day with the new staff about how this is just really a great district and people work together and they're helpful and... And, you know, she was... I think she was a little overwhelmed. And then after about the first two days of school, she came to my office and she said, people really are that way. And she says, you know, someone says, you know, I tried this with my class and it worked, so I made you a class set. Or, hey, I heard you might need this, so here's my extra one. She's... So she couldn't be happier to be here and is just really excited. And then in special ed, Jody Latini has returned to us. She's... What a resource. She had been an aide here and was trained with Megan DeCarlo in our special ed, like a special class primary room, and has come back now in our second room. And is just amazing. So four really, really strong additions to the elementary school. Talking about kind of some focuses for the elementary school this year. We have some that we're continuing. We worked a lot with the growth mindset from last year. And we did a lot of conversations with staff. And now we're really continuing the conversation with students. So you hear a lot of growth mindset language in the classrooms, which is really exciting. Also, Angie and I are going to be facilitating a full staff conversation about homework. There's a lot of talk about homework and what are the intentions of homework? What is the purpose? What should our expectations be? So we're going to lead the conversation to really see where the elementary school falls in homework and, you know, read some research. We're going to read a book with the staff. And so I'm hoping by the end of the year, we'll kind of emerge with the philosophy of the elementary school on homework. And we started last year some curriculum matrix work where we're really nailing down the specifics of what's being taught at each grade level, at each subject area, basically in each month. And we have the basics of that for the elementary school, but to really flesh it out more with the assessments and kind of the next level of that. Challenges. We... Our challenge seems to be to get school monitors. So I think some people have taken the position and haven't realized that, you know, that it is a challenge to be a monitor in our schools. That, you know, we have... These are easy jobs. These aren't just walk... Do a simple task and go home. These are complicated little people. And so we need two more. It's the fifth day of school. So if you know people, I would really encourage you to have them apply. And some of our monitors have left this year because they've had such a strong foundation, especially in their training with Megan DeCarlo, the students with autism, the trainings we send them to. They have such a foundation that they're moving on into teaching. So, you know, that's... I think that's really remarkable. So... And then we have to start over. But I couldn't be happier for them. And then things that we...
When we advertise for those jobs, how wide a net do we... Is it like the cleaner situation that we tend to just sort of advertise those things very locally? Or are the school monitors drawn from a wider area?
But it does need to be local, frankly, because people aren't going to drive very far.
That's right.
They're just going to pay. Going to put something in the last site there. Not...
My do social service.
Social service.
Penny's neighbor.
So it's just really people within a fifteen, twenty-mile radius here?
Yeah.
And the skill set that we need for it seems to be harder to come by? Or less people seem to be interested in doing it?
I think there's so much training that happens throughout the whole time you're doing your job that you have to start knowing that you're going to need help and that you're not going to know everything on the first day. So I think people have to come in knowing that they're surrounded by professionals who absolutely know what they're doing and can help them and train them. But for some people, it's overwhelming, the responsibility of...
I'm not taking that joke. Yeah, I think that day-to-day sort of interaction with the students is where... That's the whole thing.
That's it.
Is there a reason that we don't use OLS for that?
It reaches out way too far. Like it...
It reaches out to Buffalo. It goes... It automatically goes everywhere.
Even some of the teachers we have higher... Way out of the region. We had one teacher ask if the subway train stopped. Did it stop at Hubersburg? And I was like...
Our pool is talking to the customer, they're going up north, really. That's the west. I'm surprised because they're split divided around by regions, so you think that's it?
I don't think so far, except I'm hooked up with OLS.
They're not with an answer to the case.
And we pulled a significant number from this community already. So we think that we may have tapped out the number of people that are available.
It's not just us. Oh, sure enough, super fans were saying this summer's hiring season is not even over yet.
So we're off to Elsom Air, sorry.
No, that's okay. So things that we are celebrating, the continued pre-K program and how we're just continuing to strengthen it. And now that we've had it here, really doing some planning about screenings and assessments and curriculum. The pre-K team will be coming to present on October 3rd here to the board meeting and to Bosie's board at some point. I don't remember the date. The pre-K.
Oh, the pre-K team's hopefully...
October 3rd.
I think it's October 3rd.
All the Bosie's board here, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the Bosie's board would be...
That week. That same week.
Oh, I don't have my calendar.
Well, you can just let me know. But it would be great to know.
I think the next step with pre-K is really meeting more closely with the kindergarten team once they've settled a little bit and talking about... I mean, we've already heard this chatter about, wow, you know, they're coming in... You know, the group that's coming in from pre-K is knowing a lot more academically than we've seen in years. So, you know, talking about RTI services in kindergarten. What are those looking like? What are, you know, what are our benchmarks in kindergarten looking like with the kids that are coming in from... Which is an exciting, amazing conversation to have.
And the typical, you know, first week in kindergarten is really... Has been in the past, learning how to walk in a line and learning, you know, the teacher's sitting and reading a story that you're supposed to sit. And that's not when we can play with the blocks. And that's pre-K now. That is not the kindergarten conversation. The kids understand what it is to be in school. So it's really exciting.
That is great.
Really exciting. And we are continuing with the Project Lead the Way. So we had a module taught in each grade level, with the exception of third and fourth, because we had a technical glitch that we're thinking we can work through this year. All the grade levels who participated wanted to do more. So we're going to see more Project Lead the Way at each grade level this year.
And Gail Bresson and Karen Rendell are jumping on that and trying to tie it in with project-based learning. So they have a plan for at least second, third, and fourth to try and marry those two together and expand on some of those modules. And we've decided on that.
So those are the focuses for the new school.
Yeah, Project Lead the Way is happening in every building, right?
No.
Just your building?
It's the last year. Yep. It's the launch program, which is just the elementary level. And we are the only one of two districts in the state. That's two of them.
Saratoga, us, and maybe one other.
We jumped on quickly. So this isn't everywhere. This is really just Saratoga and us.
In the elementary school?
We keep good time.
So the hope is when these kids are getting to go, we have it in the middle school.
Or something similar. A lot of our high school programs are already very similar to the Project Lead the Way's version.
Project-based learning.
Right.
Or some way, shape, or form.
They're related.
Different names for different approaches. Well, yes. But all project-based.
And with a lot of science, technology, and math books.
Remember when they came to the Pike winners?
Oh, yeah.
Remember that, when they came to the kids' game? Or was it Karen that came and she did the Pike winners?
No, no. I'm not...
It was...
So it was a great start.
Very.
Okay, so middle school.
Pleased to say our total enroll, enrollments at three hundred and forty-three this year. Our smallest class is eighty-two students. Our largest is ninety-two, so we're, we're filling up nicely. We've added four staff this year. We have Sarah Whalen as our seventh grade ELA teacher. She came from the Upper East Side of New York City and is back in the region. We have Tammy Parker, who's a local here, is joining us as a sixth grade special ed teacher. Kara Kinney is a recent graduate from Ithaca College. She is our long-term music sub in, for Kristen Robertson. She'll be with us through January. And we also have Mackenzie Swartwood as a new school monitor and that's Bart Swartwood's daughter, also an alumni. So really good staff. Our conversations this year are focusing around continuing our matrix work. We've laid a solid foundation last year with the vertical articulation of what it is that we're covering in grades five, six, seven and eight. We're looking to expand that to identify what are the specific skills in each of those areas that we're teaching as well as which standards they align to. And the conversation instructionally with the teachers will be around assessment and grading. And so we, those skills and standards go hand in hand with the assessment. The grading is how, how are we going to communicate that home with, to the students and to the parents? So those conversations, we started touching on at the end of last year and will continue that through this year. One of the ones is that will help us too is continued implementation of PLC model. And PLCs are driven by four questions. What do we want them to learn? How do we assess what they're learning? How do we respond when they're not learning? How do we respond when they're learning at high levels? So those four questions just go hand in hand with our matrix work and our assessment. So that's the folk, to focus our conversations with the grade level teams. Challenges is trying to, we've got the state requirements around the new, the new professional development standards for, not standards, but for professional and initial certifications. They have to do a hundred hours. We want to make sure that we're utilizing our time that we have our teachers well, that it can contribute to it. So trying to make sure faculty meetings are more professional development as opposed to going through a long list of, this is things that you need to be aware of. The other part is the new observations. We're not using TeachScape this year. TeachScape got bought up and so it's trying to bring the staff up to speed with frontline technology. So, but it's nice as that emerges with No, it is not. So those will, I think are going to be our big challenges in middle school. Celebrations. Melissa is just a really good example of where things are going in the middle school. We have the hoop house, the gym was redone this summer. That's kind of a extra bonus. If you haven't been in there, it is phenomenal. I don't think the floor has looked that good in twenty years.
Since it was moved upstairs.
Yeah, so it's, it looks fantastic. One of the projects that got started this summer and we really haven't even gotten all the way there is the technology broadcast studio. We've been up until this past spring broadcasting analog. So we had our TV equipment running through the cable and we had an analog switch in one of our closets and it finally just died. And Time Warner said, "You don't support that." We have no equipment to loan you, you're just done. So we're in the process, we just submitted the purchase request for a new mixing board. And we're talking about new STEM material. Eric was going through what it does and how to work it and it's just blowing me away. So we'll be doing green screen. We'll be doing digital merging and ups and upgrade, uploading via YouTube or some sort of live stream. So there's a lot to come in that. So Tomorrowland is still living in tomorrow. The space is looking good, but everything's promised to come tomorrow. We'll let you know when tomorrow has arrived. But it's also the, the spirit of that room is that we continually put new stuff in that space, either instructional technology, instructional equipment and also new structural approaches. This, so far, we've got five, I don't even know what you call these chairs, but the whole building wants them now. Synergy balls. So the whole building wants them.
They're yoga balls. Yeah, they're fantastic.
And the only other part, programmatically, I'm not even going to go back to classrooms because I can't do what Melissa does. We are in the process of implementing our first FOSM, I guess for better word, modules in grades five, six, seven and eight. But we're only five days in, so there's not much to share at this point.
Project-based learning is alive and well in the middle school as well.
Definitely alive and well in the middle school. Sixth grade's tackling that, like CHAMP's eighth grade is tackling it. There's just, there's a lot of energy in the building this year. And the last piece is along the lines of energy and something new is media literacy is being taught by Gail Brison is working with our seventh grade ELA curriculum. And every other day the students are going either with Sarah Whalen or Lori Stevens to the library with Gail to talk about media literacy and library science. So it's, we've been, we've been lacking in meeting that standard and for a very long time. That middle school students are to have at least one period a week in grade seven and eight of some sort of library and media literacy. And we had not been meeting that. So we're, we're more than doubling that exposure.
So they're going to have an opportunity to actually figure out what research is?
Yes. So that's just the tip of the iceberg. So a lot of energy of them to help.
Hanging on to that. If you come to the facilities advisory committee meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM, it's in the library and it, I'm just going to tell you, it looks so different, you won't believe it. So that's my teaser. Come to the meeting and you'll see.
I just had a question about the professional development, the CTLE changes. It's a hundred hours over five years. So looking at that, which is the difference from a hundred and seventy-five hours over five years, so it's about twenty hours per year. Have we applied for sponsors so that we can be a sponsor?
Yeah, we did. We submitted our plan and the teach haven't gone back yet.
And actually I can, and I'm presenting to the board, you know, some of those changes and where we are with that.
Great. Because then really all the conferences that we have could go for those twenty hours.
Some local districts are getting that in by My Learning Plan, so the teachers can register right through there, you know. Like Josh said, the, the biggest hurdle is going to be making those faculty meetings, I think, more professional development than they are information sharing because you still need to share the information. So what's the platform for that? And how do you switch that mindset, that focus of that forty-five minutes to being that growth? You know, for teachers. So finding the tracking system will work itself out, but it's a shift in culture.
Well, I think teachers actually have to track it for themselves now. So so instead of district tracking that, the teachers will have to do that, which is a huge change.
I submit all the hours to teach once they give me a summary of what they've done.
A nice, kind of a nice piece of the frontline observation tool in My Learning Plan merging is that it forces them to go into it frequently through their observation process and when they register for courses at BOSI's or if we, once we get our CTLE certification, faculty meetings will be in their super tech conference days. So it'll be a lot more right in their face and they'll be more aware of where they're at.
Twenty hours a year is so easy. It's really
But that sounds like it's a change from the way it's been collected and recorded before. So all the teachers are aware of the fact that it's now never hold a bar.
They will.
And now there'll be information sharing.
There'll be a little bit of information sharing.
One more thing I have to do. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on here, Joe, do you have anything you want to, go out and scripting?
I, I, thanks. I am not quite as prepared as my counterparts because
No, no, I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
Right now we're, we're down quite a few people. We're down two cleaners and we just found out about a custodian. So, and another custodian is going to be going out soon on medical for surgery. So you know, my future is looking kind of desperate. So we talked a little bit about it this morning in our admin meeting. But, you know, we got to come up with a plan to get people that are interested in coming in and doing the work that we're asking them to do. Because I just think that like we've all talked about, we're tapping the market and I don't know. I mean, I have some ideas of how we can shift roles and do different things to fill the positions that we have potentially or, you know, where can we get just sub cleaners? I, I was fortunate enough to come upon a sub cleaner that had applied for the custodial position but wasn't interested in full-time. So we've got him working as much as he'll work for us right now. So that's my main challenge. We're, believe it or not, we're still kind of massaging routes, bus routes. We made some changes this summer and then had to quickly change back. So we're still kind of massaging that out and getting kids where they need to be picked up and brought to school and dropped off. And so I think that that's starting to even out now, which is nice. We saw some projects that are still kind of floating out there that we want to finish up, but as soon as the teachers came back, then my maintenance guys were I mean, I think there's almost a hundred work orders in the system right now and they're just picking away at them and unfortunately I'm not as available to help them out with those work orders as I would have been this summer, but I can help out where I can. So, but I think for the most part school, there were some hiccups, but we're, I think we're, we're settling in now, I think.
We can add work that Joe did this summer. It's actually amazing because there's just things happening all over the district. Look better, got painted, got fixed or changed the high school entrance or security, just a lot of things. And so Joe and his staff did an amazing job getting it all together and, and really I'd say three days before school started, it was kind of like take a deep breath, but it all did happen. There was a lot of people pitching in. I think Jamie and her children helped for a while.
I loaded a trash. Not bad.
Jamie, child labor laws, do we need to adjust those?
She bought some ice cream.
We did, we did see John King grounded the tile at the main entrance. I think Josh has got his own construction projects going, so I wasn't able to grab him for much, but there's still, like he mentioned, Tomorrowland, and there's still a lot of things that we both want to do with that space. And it's just a matter of giving the time to, to focus and getting a plan together. But yeah, we're still moving along with our projects.
There seems to be a bit of an undercurrent theme running through with the difficulty in finding enough monitors or enough janitors or cleaners. And is that something, is it the nature of the job? Is it because we live in a relatively small community? Or are we simply not paying enough to attract people to come and take a job?
We give a lot of competition in this area, too. I mean, we have Cornell, you have Ithaca College, all of which hire, you know, laborers at for similar positions. I think it's tapped out. I don't know what we're just about, you know.
I think it's our pool. We're, we're a small puddle.
In a higher poverty region, people will be looking for more of these jobs. I don't think, from my experience, it hasn't been an issue, but
How we would have to address that, but that would have a budgetary implication. Okay, anything else that we? Good, then moving on to the dissent and
We need to pull E because it needs to be revised.
So are there any other nominations we can send to Jenny other than E? At least why not be pulled as just correct or carried? Okay, do you need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Yeah, we need somebody to motion about item E.
We got to vote.
But we have motion carried, all in favor, yes. Oh, sorry. Say that too often. It's like repeating myself all the time. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed, any extensions? Okay, motion carried. Need a motion for E?
So moved.
Okay, and needs to be presented as four hours per day.
Very first item.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, no objections? Okay. Moving on to new business. Under due business, adoption of the district safety plan. I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second? Are there any questions or discussions? We've had an opportunity to look at this for a while. All right, all in favor? Any opposed or extensions? Okay, motion carried. Item B, the adoption of the building's safety plans. And I do need to point out that while we need more approval for that, they will not be posted publicly for a safety reason. So a motion please?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, any questions, concerns or? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed or extensions? Oops, we have C here, right? The authorization decided facilities used agreed between Truvensburg School District and the Truvensburg After-School Program. A motion please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Oh, you look, I have a requiring mind down there.
I'm saying second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, and your opposed or extensions? Okay, motion carried. Moving on to the walk-ons, which is D, this is the authorization to increase the appropriated budget. I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second? Okay, any questions, any explanations, any additional information?
Just explanation.
That's Kimberly's speakers.
This is a piece of business we do every school year. Because we pay for our buses out of the capital reserve. It's necessary that once the taxpayers approve that expenditure in the spring and we actually purchase the buses, then we have to increase the appropriated budget. We move that money from the reserve into the budget. And that's what we're doing here.
And, and the amount's just determined at this point by how much those buses cost?
The actual expense.
Okay, that's the word, that was the actual expense, yes.
So that's the, the expense and not a destination?
That is the exact expense.
Any other questions or comments?
Fits down to six cents. I hope it's the actual expense. And they were not just estimating to the six cents. I'd be impressed if you were. Yeah, pretty exact estimate.
More fun that way. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or extensions? Okay, motion carried. Item E is the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school counter alteration.
So moved.
I'm reading that as literation. I'm listening. Second? Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any questions regarding this?
Can I just state, the boards, one of the board's goals kind of came up, community engagement committee was to move some board meetings off campus. Got one. And this will be, this board meeting is focused on kind of a public hearing around the facilities advisory committee report. Comes at a good time, early December, and this is the location that we've procured. So this will be a move off campus. We're still trying to find a second one for the February meeting, but haven't caught that one yet.
Great. The other question, comment?
Thank you for the logistics of putting it all out.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or extensions? Okay, motion carried. Now, anything for the board forum that you would like to give for the good of the order, so to speak?
Sounds like we're off to a great start in all three buildings. Congratulations.
I was able to attend the PDIS event in the middle school, which was just adorable. Yes, every student took a letter of the PDIS. So fifth grade took except for some others. And sixth grade took B and seventh grade took C and eighth grade took D and they did skits and they were able to be judges of it. But of course, you know, I had a preference for the sixth grade. There was a little local one who it was great. It was a nice way to culminate that learning around those, those, the PDIS effort. So it was, it was nice. It was nice to see the kids.
I do have one comment, and that is that at the dinner where I got all of that material on leadership, I happened to be sitting next to Rick Timms and he was a bit on the doom and gloomy side about what financial aid is going to be looking like for the next couple of years. Thinks things are going to be pretty flat. And then I listened again to Tim Kremer interviewing DeNapoli and similar information. So it's consistent, I suspect. Kind of be as rosy as they have been lately. Kind of be as rosy as they have been lately.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding those pending [inaudible].
Some.